We call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, February 19th. We have your call, please.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Trolson.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
And Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have all seven in the council present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and free for all.
Thank you. Now, we ask you to not have your caps on. Thank you. With that, we'll go on to, we have no changes to the agenda. We look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We will move on to the public hearing, number 1.5.1, Develop District 5, Antiff 5-1, and we'll go to Troy.
Tax increment financing is being pursued for the redevelopment of the old Hardee's in Budgetmark site on South Oak Avenue. The project would consist of the demolition of the two buildings, and the car wash, and the removal of the gas pumps. The developer tailwinds of Oatana would construct a 7,000-square-foot building, as well as a 4,500-square-foot building on the site. Also part of the project would be the realignment of Barney Street to bring it in at a right angle to South Oak Avenue. The total increment amount is approximately $230,000 for the entire project. The TIF amount would go towards the demolition of the buildings, the site work, and the realignment of Barney Street with administrative costs. The TIF district would run for up to 25 years, although we are estimating that the TIF could be paid off in approximately 15 years. The developer would also have to sign a development agreement, as well as a business subsidy agreement. The amount of property taxes currently paid on the property would continue to be paid to the city, only the tax increment from the added value of the new construction on site would be used as the increment for this project. The city does contract with Advanced Resources to make sure we comply with the laws of using tax increment financing, which includes writing the TIF plan, the development agreement, and the business subsidy agreement. Consulting fees would be paid for by the EDA from their consulting budget and would be reimbursed by the TIF for the project. Staff would recommend adoption of the attached resolutions approving Development District Number 5, Tax Increment Financing District 5-1, and the use of Tax Increment Financing. And we do have Ed Sheeta here from Advanced Resources to answer any questions relative to the TIF plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Troy's covered that a lot. If you have any questions, this is going to be a redevelopment tax increment district, and it is somewhat of a combination of pay-as-you-go and some upfront funding, and that's because the city is proposing to do some street realignment, and they'll use the tax increment to pay for that, and because you'll be paying for it as a city, you'll be paying, essentially that's what constitutes an upfront contribution into a project. And the developers will receive pay-as-you-go, they will get reimbursed for the cost of demolishing the buildings there. How that'll work in terms of the development agreement, I just wanted to, you know, we do this combination thing, that's not, that isn't an issue. The hierarchy, if you will, of how the tax increment will be repaid, will be, the first dollars in the increment will be repaid to pay off the debt, you know, you'll split it annually, but you'll take the amount you need as a city first to retire the public improvements. The net amount that's left over in that year would then go to pay off the development agreement on a pay-as-you-go. So, and we'll, there's some dollars to work out, but as I understand it, Troy, we're working with the city, it's somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000 for the public improvement, and this would be about $100,000 or so for the demolition. So they're roughly equal activities. So, a combination there of pay-as-you-go, and the developer will be responsible for all their costs. And the reason we approached it that way is there's two parts to this development. We do believe both of the projects are going to go at the same time. I met with the developers the other day in Mankato and just asked them, they think that's the case, but there is a possibility that one project leads the other one by a year, and we're going to have a smaller increment in the first year or something. City gets first claim, so.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Any question? Raymond?
Just question, has the developer set some timetables on when this all might start?
Well, we expect that following this, when the weather gets better, demolition and the construction is, the construction that they've told me they plan to build it all this year.
I was a little surprised they don't attend a meeting like this, the developers.
I represent the developer. I apologize. Kyle Smith is the...
Could you, sir?
Please come up and identify yourself, sir.
Douglas Bellmore, Turning Point Management. I live in Oatana, Minnesota, 816 Greenhaven. I apologize, Kyle could not be here tonight. He's a corporate pilot, and sometimes he gets less than six hours' notice. He's in Pennsylvania as we speak. The expectation, this project will be complete by October and occupied. That's where our expectation is for our tenants to move in. And again, the developer is represented here tonight because he's very respectful of your time, and that's why I'm here.
We're trying to do something.
No, it's important.
I would expect that also.
Yep, absolutely. Other good questions?
Thank you.
Which, which project is yours? The larger of the two?
They're both tailwinds.
They're both?
Yes.
And which one would you anticipate for sure would be going this year?
Oh, they're both going this year. The one unit is primarily rented right now, we're down to some final negotiations, but it's in the, just about letter of intent, but both parties are moving forward. And that will be Office Space Professional. And the other building already has one tenant, and that will be a commercial build-out.
Going to demo everything at once?
Yep. And I think it's important that there was some great cooperation between the developer and the city to clean up Barney Street, because that's an interesting intersection, and I think that mutually helps all the parties involved. And again, I think significantly, as a, as a resident of Oatana, having to stare at that thing for the last five years, that tremendously adds value to that part of the city, because there's, there will now be further redevelopment up that corridor, and as you're well aware with the redeployment of 14, I think you're going to see some good, good commercial development in that area to bring that piece back to life, and this is a good opening round. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nate?
I would just have probably one more question for Ed, if he could maybe clarify. The question has come up as to the interest rate we pay, the interest rate on the different TIFs that we would do.
Yes.
And possible variations in the amount. Can you clarify how that would be established and why they may be different in?
Well, why they're different, I don't know if there's any real significant reason for that. The, let's talk, the concept behind the pay-as-you-go tax increment, what the developers are typically asking us for in a redevelopment district is to assist them in offsetting some very defined costs. And from the city's end, because this is a long development district, lasts up to 25 years, I'm always trying to think, how do you make it shorter, shorter, and shorter? I would say that the, the interest rate in there, I believe, is at 4%. And I don't know exactly what the developer can borrow money for. You know, prime rate is 3.25, if they're, you know, if they're a good company or something, they can probably get it for four and a quarter or something, maybe 1% over prime. We're not actually bonding in it, so they're, they have a cost of money. All we're really, we're reimbursing them for $100,000 to demolish it, plus some reasonable cost of money. We don't make them go out and document that they're going to borrow money at exactly X and then use that as a discount in there. So that's the explanation in this one. And the question will come up in the next hearing a little bit, that's got a 5%. The economic development districts are something quite different in that instance, and has much more to do with a much more complicated proposal that was made. To me, it's almost irrelevant whether we discount that cash flow in that situation or not, because we're really trying to offer them as a means whereby they don't have the burden of local property taxes for a number of years. And the discount rate just gives us something to, give them a somewhat of a sense of what it might be worth.
And ultimately, we're looking at just an assumption of the cost over the term, so our actual dollars are going to be sorted out from the beginning, we have an idea what it's going to cost.
Right. I, I think in this proposal with the Hardee's, the county had a real good opportunity both to look at what's there, what's being proposed, and a lot of comparable stuff. I think the estimate of increment in this project is very accurate. And so the, the idea that it can pay about $200,000 a cost, I think, is a, is a real good estimate. We'll talk a little bit more in the next one about numbers a little bit more.
Thank you. Ray?
Just got a question. Troy, what does a TIF project cost us out of EDA? What kind of dollars is?
Generally, it's between $7,000 and $10,000, depending on how complicated it is.
Well, with that, it's 7:14, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Or anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this, please step forward and sign your name.
Paul, you want to take this up, please?
Sure. Paul Swenson from South Street, and I do want to commend Doug and the developers on the development. I too have tired of looking at that corner. I would like to clarify more on the interest rate question, and what, what I was getting out of that question, Ed, was in the hospital redevelopment, that discount rate and the interest rate that we're accruing on the debt we owe the developer is the same. Is that the intent here?
In the hospital project, we were trying very hard to get to a number that they could use to justify tearing that building down. They were willing to not only let us establish a low discount, you know, it's a discount, the lower you put the interest rate, the more money you have upfront. They not only let, kind of said, do that, they also did something I don't do in a plan, they actually accepted an assumption on some inflation over time. So my sense there is, you know, they may never actually see all of their money out of it. You know, I, this interest rate question is, is, it's a good question, because we're trying to figure out, if somebody asks us for money, what's fair to give them? And one legitimate way to look at that is say, well, how much is that money worth today when we're talking about over a number of years? But oftentimes, what they're kind of asking us isn't really that question. They're saying, we would like the benefit of the tax not being there for a number of years. We really don't care what the interest rate is. But in the hospital, there was a real question, and, and we did work it that way, and also came back to the city putting some money in it and getting money out. And we were trying not, we were trying to say, the city's money is worth something too, you shouldn't put it into a deal for zero in that situation. I don't have a better answer, Paul, I'm sorry.
Okay. But we could, we, we could, if we could issue a bond for 3%, raise the money, cover the cost of the development, and use the tax increment to pay the bond off. If we shrink the interest rate, we shrink that time, like you say, you're trying to get the time down.
Correct.
So the bigger we make the interest rate, the longer we make the time.
Right.
And basically, the, the simple definition I see is we're allowing developers to, a place to put their money where they can accrue at 4% or 5% or 3%. And I, I see a track that isn't real comfortable. It would be, I think it would be better for us to issue the bond, give them the money, and pay the bond off with the taxes shorter period, so that the tax, the community can enjoy the tax benefits of that development. And again, it's not against any development, this is great, but I see a trend that is rather uncomfortable, and I think I can leave it at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just add one comment at the end there. We've talked about bonding versus pay-as-you-go. We all understand the pay-as-you-go is not bonding, and the city's not putting its full faith in credit. And I think that's always why, one of the reasons, we know we can bond cheaper, and we can get rid of it sooner. I personally think the tax increment bonds are reasonably safe, but it is putting your money on the front, and not that we wouldn't take other steps to ensure that that money was as safe as could be. By the developer financing it, we have none of that financial risk. So that's always been the decision, and we've moved away from, I would say, generally bonding for the projects. And as a result of that, I think we're a little softer on how we value the money.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? See another motion to close the public hearing?
No more.
Motion by Raymond to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's up to the council. What are your questions from the council, or what are your wishes?
I'm moved we approve that development.
Okay, we have a resolution 18-13, approving Development District Number 5. We have a motion by Raymond.
I'll second that.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we will move on to 1.5.1.2, Resolution 1913, Approving the Increment Financing District Number 5-1 and Use of TIF. What is the council's wishes?
Show move approved.
A motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We will now move on to 1.5.2, Development of District 3, Modification and Creation to Use of TIF District Number 3-6. Troy?
Tax increment financing is also being pursued for the possible addition on the Viracon in the industrial park. The project would consist of 100,000-square-foot addition that would span across Fourth Avenue, which would be vacated. The utilities within the street would have to be moved, and a regional pond in the industrial park would also have to be constructed. The total increment amount is approximately $4.35 million for the entire project. The TIF district would run for nine years, and the company would have to sign a development agreement, as well as a business subsidy agreement. And again, this would function the same way as, as the other one. This is, the increment's only created by the added value of the addition, all the current taxes being paid by Viracon would continue to be paid to the city. Our administrative costs, again, on this would be tied, rolled into the TIF and be paid back to us through the life of the TIF. So staff would recommend the adoption of the attached resolution approving Development District Number 3, Modification, and Tax Increment Financing District 3-6, and the use of Tax Increment Financing for this potential project.
Thank you, Troy. Are you working on this one also?
Oh, yes. This, the, the proposal by Viracon is, is in many ways, conceptually, for the purposes of tax increment, just like the one we talked about, but it's much, much larger. Viracon currently has about a half a million square foot footprint, and there, and about 1,000 employees in the community. Expansion that they're talking about would be upwards of $95 to $110 million in new investment in building and equipment. Phase one of that expansion is, involves some coter equipment, big, long building, about 100,000 square feet, which the company, and the, the ownership of the company, Apogee, that, that's a, that project is agreed to and everything, that's planned for right now. It's also planned that there's a second phase in the project, which is about a quarter million square feet, I think, of additional space that would, would realign all the warehousing and everything, and increasing the, the footprint out there. It's, it's generally, the general thinking is that the sequence, the sequence of these would be that the first coter phase would get under construction this year, you know, would be hopefully completed, you know, sometime, maybe towards the end of the year or early next year, whatever. That would bring in the new equipment and everything. That would be followed in the next cycle with the other addition. So this plan kind of, it encompasses everything, it's an economic development district. So its total life would be as many as nine, it'll, it'll collect increment in nine years. So it'll have a smaller increment at the outset, because phase one will only be contributing to that. Then when phase two comes in, in the second, or maybe even the third year of the increment, then it's going to go that way. How the increment's going to be used out here is, two ways. It's going to be used to offset a number of public improvements and, and things, and then also reimburse the company for site improvements. The public improvement portion of it is work that needs to be done out there to get rid of a street, take care of storm water retention, other public utility relocation and everything. The state has agreed, and we're working on submitting a grant for $1.1 million. That grant has to be matched dollar for dollar in order to get it. The proposal to match it is that the tax increment dollars, $1.1 million in tax increment, would be used to match the grant. So we need like $2.2 million for these utilities. That $1.1 million, you will have to bond for, Paul, that, that's going to have, you're going to have to bond for that, unless you have $1.1 million in utility funds or something available, my understanding is you don't. So that will be bonded for. So in that sense, the agreement will be that there's enough value created with phase one, that the bonds will take precedence. They will have the first claim on the increment all the way through. As the project continues to get expanded upon, the additional increment will be reimbursed for site improvements. Now, the numbers in here say that that increment could go up to $750,000 a year. And I want to talk just one minute about how we got to that number. There are no building plans out there. They have nothing, that, that's based on a value of about $75 a square foot. And their new construction, and what they've told us and everything, that's consistent for, say, example, like where Chart is at, that's a consistent value for that. The difference with Viracon is they have buildings out there that are worth $9.25 a square foot. I've talked with the assessor a number of times, he's still wrestling with this, just how is he going to value this at the end, at the end? Will he look solely at the new things and compare it to other comparable new construction, or is he going to get into, you know, spreading some of that value through the whole parcel and depreciation, et cetera? I don't know that exactly. Hence, we have this also, again, combination, pay-as-you-go by the developer and the upfront. What we want to do is ensure that whatever the city puts in upfront, is that there will be sufficient increment to repay the city. And the developer, they will collect whatever's over and above that, or they will pay a shortfall if there's not enough. So this is going to be a little different in that when the development agreement comes out, there will be an assessment agreement because of the size of this and because of the bonds, that say they will create enough market value there, and given the current tax code and structures, that market value will be sufficient to service the bonds. In addition, I suspect that Briggs and Morgan, when they drop the bond documents, are going to ask for like a deficiency payment if it isn't there. So we're trying to say, keep the city cost, and not having to fall back anywhere in the general tax rolls for that. I believe that there will be more than enough increment to pay for the bonds, you know, as that moves forward. But that's how we're going to protect that end of it. The other end is, is the pay-as-you-go, they need to document their costs, they will be reimbursed from those costs over time, same as the previous one. And to that extent, we're not really going to restrict them in terms of they're coming in and appealing their property taxes on value. They may say, well, you know, $75 a square foot maybe sounds fair, and it generates $750,000, but we think $50 a square foot is going to pay you guys off, and it's a good number for us to live with. And also bear in mind, the only thing you tie up with the increment is the city, the county, and the school. There's a big chunk of money out there called state property taxes, and if the local taxes are higher, by proportionally, the state is higher. So we would like to ensure that they have enough money in this to pay back bonds, but they also have the flexibility above that to negotiate what's a fair market value based on their final product. So that's, we accomplish that. As to this issue now of what interest rate, I want to talk about because it's different here. In order to even get to this point of this hearing tonight, the city's put in a lot of time, along with the county and state representatives, in responding to a, a development proposal to Viracon that had, has Oatana in a competitive situation with other areas. I, I don't believe the mayor or anyone, Troy, or anyone else has actually seen anyone else's proposal. We don't know exactly what other people offered, but we know what they were capable of offering, and we kind of know what they were willing to offer, given other projects in their area. In some areas, we compete very well. In other areas, we weren't able to come up with the same kind of dollars. So the package at Oatana, and the state, and everybody put together looks different than the other packages. And I do know, for example, the, the other site in Georgia, for example, Georgia does a lot of stuff through state involvement and through tax credits. And they are able to write off income taxes, they're able to write off withholding taxes and everything with developments that can be very substantial. We don't have that ability in Minnesota, so we come back with a different type of a package. So, it, to how we got to the interest rate in the end is almost a moot point here. Really, what they were asking everybody who responded to their proposal was, is there a way to abate or get rid of property taxes for a fixed number of years? Their proposal said, we'd like to see something go 10 to 20 years. We don't have the ability to go that long with tax increments, nine years. That's what's on the table. So it really, if you look at it, forget about the interest rate, what we're really doing through a kind of convoluted process, we're saying to them, through this tax increment, by and large, city, county, school district taxes, we're just going to use those over this time period to pay for the project. So make the interest rate lower, we're just going to pay more expenses. There's more than enough costs to go around to use up whatever increment's available.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Ed. With that, we'll open it up for public hearing at 7:29 for this District 3. Anyone wishes to speak, please come forward.
Council President Abraham and members, Scott Kupchak, current board chair of the Oatana Chamber of Commerce. And first off, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here tonight and talk with you. We did already put a letter in each of your hands, and so I'm just going to kind of verbalize some of those items on here, in support of Viracon's expansion and the tax increment financing project. Specifically, we support the taxing increment financing and the vacation of that Fourth Avenue to provide for Viracon and the expansion to happen here in Oatana. Some of the main reasons, the job retention, Viracon obviously being one of our biggest employers, we want to make sure that they, they're happy here and they want to stick around. 500 to 800 jobs currently, that doesn't include all the support businesses that Viracon has throughout the community, and that's, a lot of our 600 members obviously value that and is important to them. The investment in the community from a construction standpoint, 30-plus million dollars being invested in our, in our area here, obviously has a big impact. And then the, no, no loss in the current taxes that they're paying, the, the city won't lose any tax income on the existing facilities in Vira. Viracon will continue to pay them as they do today. So with all those things that are going on, obviously Viracon being a key employer in Oatana, us as a chamber wanted to make sure that you knew we were in support of this project, and we'd appreciate your support also.
Thank you. And I did receive a letter from the chamber supporting that, so thank you very much.
And I'm Mike Peterson from Wood Duck Lane, I represent the public policy portion, and I just wanted to make sure in case anybody from Apogee was watching, how much support we had here in Minnesota, so, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
I too am very supportive of Viracon expanding and become, staying a member of our community, and it's great. I'm concerned about this interest rate thing. I, Ed, I'm not quite sure how we got to, it doesn't matter. I think it does matter. I think when the bond community finds out that cities are willing to pony up 5%, it's probably going to start to drive our cost of borrowing. And maybe I'm missing something. Are you saying that they, the 5% is moot? Doesn't matter? They won't get any of it back? They're not going to get 5%?
I, I don't know that, but I guess the point is, they have a cost of doing business. And, and as I said before, we're not bonding on that, any portion for them. Now, the city is going to bond, and if they get 2% or maybe, it's going to be more than that, I would think, but it's going to be somewhere in there, because you're going to back it up with a general obligation. As to what the, the company's cost is, again, I don't know exactly that, but I would guess that they pay something to put their money to work. I don't mean to say it doesn't matter, but we could make it zero. You know, we could make it zero, but we're still going to give them back whatever that net increment is annually until we've paid back the costs that they documented. Against this very large project, we can, the legal costs that you can pay back are all kinds of site improvements and everything else. There is, you know, you're going to be $50 million of new construction, not including the equipment, because it's really not, but it's about 100. If we do the whole project, which this tax increment talks about, it's 195 to, say, $110 million of total investment. Out of that, they would have to, you know, document $3 or $4 million in so-called eligible costs. If they gave us those costs, and we had $3 or $4 million If they gave us those costs and we had $3 or $4 million to give them over time, the interest rate doesn't, you don't need it. You just say, we'll give it back. In fact, most of the tax increments I do particularly, smaller communities, pay as you go, I always do them at zero interest rate. I just make them document 100% whatever increment we think we're going to give them. I ask them to document 100% of those costs upfront. Then we reimburse them for the costs with no interest over time. They didn't, nobody incurs those costs with no cost of money in them, but there's only so many dollars that are there. I don't mean to be light about the interest point. It's a good point, but when I, when I kind of think of increment, I look at it, what are we trying to accomplish? We have a fixed amount of dollars per year. How we spend those, what we actually call them, we can play around with that a little bit. And this particular project, there, you know, when you talk about the size of the investment, will generate up legitimate costs. And again, I got that odd, the other thing that's thrown in here is we're also competing on a, on a much bigger stage this time for this development. And everybody else was willing to take property taxes off the table. So that, you know, so comparing us to whatever other area, the property taxes for what the city charges or what their local government's charged always is the same number.
So is it fair to say that it's the 4.5 million number?
Right.
That we want to show them that's our support to you?
Right.
So if we made it a lower interest rate, that number would go up and we would be providing...
Yeah, we're saying we would provide them net about, and actually take 1.1. If the taxes were at this level, what we're saying that we would provide them is $3.2 million in tax increment over time. That's, that's the number we're telling them that we're going to, if it's available, that's the number that they would take out over nine years with these improvements. I don't, as I said before, I don't know exactly. That's based on the conversation with the assessor valuing the building, the improvements for the building at $75 a square foot, which I'm saying is comparable to other new buildings that you've built more recently, but it's not comparable to the value that Viracon has out there now because of the age and the type of structures. So the assessor's going to come back and he's going to say, oh, I'm going to value this. And it might not be $75 a square foot, it might be 50. In which case, the whole formula comes down, we want the 1.1 million match, they're going to get maybe instead of 3.2 million, maybe they get 2 million. But they don't get what they don't pay in.
Okay, all right. I won't belabor it, but I think interest rates matter, and I think we need to pay attention to that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? With that, we will, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Is that a question, a problem?
Wait until I...
Okay, close the hearing.
I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Nate to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing part is closed. You have a question, Raymond?
One of the problems that county assessors had, there hasn't been a lot of industrial property sold in Owatonna the last 20 years. That's where he's, because I've worked with him on some other stuff when I was working at a company, because that's been the problem on assessments for industrial, there just hasn't been a lot of property sold in the last 10 years in Owatonna.
Cost will be a big driver in it, I do know that.
That's what's driving that, because that's a hard figure to come up with.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? We have a motion, 1.5, 2.1, Resolution 2013, to approve the developmental district number three. What is the council's wishes?
We'll approve.
I got a motion from Kevin.
Grant.
Grant. Second by Greg. Any further discussion?
Les, I just have one other thing to add. The, the fact remains when these TIF and business subsidy agreements and things like this come up, there's always some questions about, you know, why we do it and if we should be doing it. And the fact of the matter is, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to get into doing all these big cumbersome agreements. But the fact remains that we are, we are competing with other states to attract and maintain business, and some states are more competitive than others. You may have opinions on our state. I certainly do on how competitive we are, which requires us to do maybe some more things that we, in a perfect world, wouldn't have to do. But ultimately, we want to attract and retain our businesses because they do, you know, they are the drivers of the economy in our area. So I think this is something that's going to be very valuable in the long run. But there are always questions that come up when we do these things as to, you know, why we have to do them and if we should be doing them.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
You know, my compliments goes to the city council. We don't have a lot of things in our tool bag that we can use to recruit and retain businesses. TIF is one of the very few issues or items that we have, so my compliments to the city council to accept both of those TIF issues tonight as we move forward. Tracking businesses and recruiting businesses and retaining businesses is a very difficult issue. There's a lot of negotiations that go on behind the scenes, and when we have limited funds to be able to do that, we need to take credit for the ones we do have. We will continue to work with the state to try and increase their budget funding to recruit businesses within our communities, but that's another challenge that we face.
Yes, that's for sure. Raymond?
Troy, at some point, do we have a limit on TIF that we or the city, we can only, are we, is there an infiger, we can only...
No, not for TIF.
So there's no limit on TIF?
Correct.
It was Job Z, but not TIF?
Yeah, Job, but I know, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to 1.53, application for small cities development grant, and we'll go back to Troy.
The city is seeking financial assistance by participating in a grant for, through the Small Cities Development Program, which is administered by the Department of, Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for the rental rehabilitation and the commercial rehabilitation of a specified target area of the city. In your packets, you have brochures or draft brochures at this point of the targeted area. This is a downtown grant, much like the small cities grants that we did twice now in the last eight years. And the three blocks of Cedar Avenue, the block of Western, West Broadway and West Bridge would be the targeted area. And then within those pamphlets there too, it gives you some of the criteria that would be needed to beat the requirements of the grant. The grant request would be for $420,000 in administrative funds in the amount of $50,400 to administer the program. The program would provide deferred loan funding for 10 years at approximately $8,000 per rental unit and $30,000 per commercial project. These funds would be matched with deferred loans through the HRA, which they have already approved, and then the EDA with their existing loan programs and also owner equity. Staff would recommend taking comments from the public during the public hearing and then recommend adopting resolution authorizing the submission of the grant application for the Small Cities Development Program for the rehabilitation of rental and commercial projects in that designated downtown area.
Thank you, Troy. With that, at 7:42, we will open up the public hearing. For anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Raymond to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now it's up to the council. Raymond?
Just serving on the EDA and seeing what's happened down there on the past grants where they, they make their payments on all the umbrellas in the front of stores and the glass and all the remodeling's been done there from grants before. I mean, that's, those people, every month they pay so much a month back to the city for EDA, and that's done wonders for what they've accomplished. Troy and staff have really kept an economic development team that is so valuable to a community, as I've seen it the last 15 years, I guess, and what's accomplished from 12, 12, 15 people have took advantage of that. It's unbelievable, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Move that approval of that.
We have a motion to approve 2113, authorizing grant application for Small Cities Development Program. So, Raymond, do we have a second? Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to 1.5, 4, Improvement 1303, East Broadway Project. And with that, we'll move to Kyle.
Good evening. This is the improvement hearing related to assessments for the East Broadway Improvement Project. The feasibility report was presented to the city council on January 22nd. Subsequent to that, we held a neighborhood meeting with good attendance from the neighborhood on February 11th, took some comments. One of the questions we had for the neighbors was the street width and parking issues there. The general consensus that I left with was that they would like to stay at the same width that it currently is, which is about 28 feet from face of curb to face of curb. We had put together a total improvement cost of $630,000, $630,722.30. The council, in previous action, had set a cap of $52 per foot for the street assessments. This project would exceed that cap. We had estimated it at being approximately $80 per foot. In addition to that, there would be assessments for the sanitary sewer service and water service if the property requires them, and we expect most of these properties will. So with that, I can provide any more detail or if you have any questions.
Thank you. With that, we'll open a public hearing on Broadway at 7:45. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, please come forward and sign in.
President Abraham and city council members, thank you for your time. My name is Mary Schweiders. I am a resident on East Broadway Street. I moved into the neighborhood in November 2009. At the time, my realtor in promoting the property told me that it was a low-volume street. My observation in the three and a half years I've lived there is that there is a fair amount of traffic on East Broadway Street. I am on the south side of the street, and on a fairly regular basis, I don't need alarm to get up in the morning as the traffic in the morning for people traveling to work and dropping their kids off at nearby Washington Elementary School is loud enough to wake me up. I don't dispute that the street is in poor condition and needs to be reconstructed. I agree with Kyle's observation from the neighborhood meeting last week, that the general sense of the neighborhood is that the street does not need to be widened. I agree with that. I do not think parking is an issue. I didn't hear any complaints about inadequate parking in the neighborhood. And I am also concerned about the increase, the potential increase in the volume if, of traffic if the street is widened. My house faces north, and I have a detached garage that faces the alleyway. So my primary access to my property is through the alleyway. I will not be inconvenienced by the reconstruction of the street. But I also wanted to bring to your attention that during reconstruction, I suspect that traffic will use the alleyway as an alternative to East Broadway Street. So the alleyway is between East Broadway Street and Main Street. On a daily basis, there are children who walk to and from school, primarily Washington Elementary. And for people who travel through the alleyway, they go through at a fairly high speed. It's quite shocking to me as I look out my back doors and see how quickly people drive down that alleyway. So I think it's worth your foresight to prepare for how to protect kids in the alleyway, whether that's putting up signs saying it's only for property owners to travel through the alleyway, making it a temporary one-way. People who aren't familiar with the alleyway, there's a lot of bushes and trees. The approach to my driveway, traveling west down the alleyway, is blind. And if you're not paying attention, you could easily strike and kill a child. And I don't think that's worth the cost of not trying to figure out some way to be precautionary during the reconstruction period, because I do think people are going to divert to using the alleyway. I live close to Chambers Avenue, that end of the street, so I want to thank you for your consideration. I would request that the street reconstruction move forward, but that the street not be widened and that there be some attention paid to how the alleyway is going to be managed during the construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, can we put in local traffic only signs?
I believe there is on the east end already, but we can add some additional construction...
What would happen, for example, if you made it eastbound one-way only?
We could do that during construction also.
Which would require you to come in from the west, exit the east, and that would eliminate that westbound traffic?
It is a very valid concern that, you know, that would turn into a through street.
I think we need to look at that, and if we can do it, we can to stop that from happening.
Essentially, the problem is people coming off Rice Lake Street and going straight down the alleyway.
Yeah. So if we make it westbound or eastbound only and do not enter, that would stop some of that. Raymond?
I think we'll be starting construction after school's out, so that won't affect the kids. But we could have the police do some monitoring of that alley also. If you feel a certain time of the day, we could have them monitor that.
There is a daycare on one side of my property, and on the other side, new renters, I'm assuming, with two young children.
But I mean, we could have the police even monitor, yet if they're feeling a certain time of the day, we could have them check it too, you know?
If we did that eastbound one-way, that would probably stop the westbound traffic from coming through.
I think any, anything we can try to do to be proactive, just to try to minimize the traffic would be helpful.
I think we need to look at that, and if we can...
Just the potential uptick in traffic, it's much safer going one-way as opposed to two ways.
That's right.
Be a communication thing, let all, everybody know that it's one-way, I mean...
And I also think if there is increased traffic, it's also going to wear and tear on the alleyway. It's in poor condition itself. There's a significant pothole which people avoid and drive on my lawn. So I know that with more traffic, that will just get worse. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nate?
I guess I would maybe just ask Kyle, you've already had contact with the homeowners, if we can, if you can talk to some of them and ask them if they would be okay with the one-way traffic on that alley during construction?
Certainly. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Les, I know, you know, a lot of the parking lots and stuff, they do speed bumps, so speed bumps would be another alternative.
Yes, it would.
Control the speed down the alley.
That would be another consideration, speed bumps.
On her own way.
Speed bumps? Potholes?
It's already there.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? They will look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Nate to close the public hearing, second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now this is up to the council to make a decision on this.
I move approval of Resolution 22-13.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve Resolution 22-13. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we will go on to 1.5, 5, Improvement 13004, 2013 Street, and Utility Project for... Let's see, we've got a number of streets in this one, so...
Les, Les, just one point. I know the neighborhood was very concerned about the width of that previous, of East Broadway. Do we want to address that? I thought that was the consensus, not to make it wider.
What I understand, it's set at the 28-foot.
Right.
We did not have anything in the motion to change that.
So it's maintaining the...
It's maintaining the 28-foot.
Yeah, okay. Just to be clear.
That's what I approved.
So, with that, we'll move on to the next one, and we'll go back to Kyle.
Good evening. This is the Large Street and Utility Improvement Project affecting Willow Avenue, Mcandoe Street, 14th Street Southeast, 15th Street Southeast, an alley between Front Street and Fremont Street that terminates in Elm Street. Street that terminates in Elm Street and Grove Avenue, or, excuse me, Elm Avenue and Grove Avenue, and then Selby Avenue between Bridge Street and Mound Street for the assessments. And that also includes a number of overlays, but it has been the policy of the city in the past not to assess for overlays.
Has the alley been scratched? Mine's got a line across. Has that been scratched, the alley?
Yeah. One of the property owners spoke at the neighborhood meeting and is concerned about economic times and not wanting to have the additional costs at this time. What I did was I talked with our street superintendent. We have not been spending much in the way of funds on fixing that alley. I have no problem postponing that portion until future time. It is fully deteriorated. It's not in great shape, but it sounded like they were willing to... That owner, and that was the only, we did only hear from one owner there, was willing to accept that, the current condition.
Is there another alley we should consider then, if we're going to take that?
I guess I'm not ready for a recommendation on that yet, but...
Okay.
And then, McInde Street from Lincoln to Truman does have some underground on it, so there would, those properties, in addition to the street assessment, would be subject to possible sewer and water service assessments as well. If their service isn't copper for water, it gets replaced, and if it isn't PVC, then it's much cheaper to do that at this time while it's under construction, so...
Thank you.
The other comment that I received, and I believe a few of the, few others have received it, was from St. John's Church at 301, 1301 Lincoln Avenue. They received an assessment for 12th Street last year, and I believe they submitted a request for some consideration this year as well.
So what we would be looking for is if we have it in the motion, is to approve that 14th Street for the church the same way we did 12th last year?
Correct. They do front Lincoln, their address is Lincoln. It's a large property. It has, it's, well, it's a city block.
Street on four sides.
Yep. And in the public hearing, I believe there's a couple of representatives from the church here tonight.
Thank you. With that, we'll, at 12...
What'd we do for 12th last year?
We did like a side yard corner.
So, but that, is that part of the motion?
We would have to include that in the motion. With that, at 7:56, we'll open up to public hearing, so if anyone wishes to speak, please come forward.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your attention here tonight. I don't have any real objections to the improvements that you want to do on 14th. I live at 632, 14th Street Southeast. Todd Heel is my name. But I had a couple of questions. I should have been able to get to the neighborhood meeting, probably could have answered these, but I didn't. So I just wanted a couple things. Number one, how do you handle, do you try to put the street in drivable condition at the end of the day after the construction is going on?
We try to maintain temporary access. It's, of course, very dependent on weather. You know, the associate engineer that's working on that project is very good at working with the neighbors and trying to keep access. We're not going to be able to guarantee 100%, you know, like I said.
Does that include driveway access?
Thank you.
When we can. There will be, when they're pouring curb, there will be limited access, and then seven days after that concrete is poured for cure time. So there will be some disturbance there. And on 14th Street, we're not replacing all of the curb, so depending on the condition of your approach, we don't know if it'll be coming out or not.
Okay. The street currently had these underground sump pump lanes put in quite a number of years ago.
Okay.
And they've dipped, you know, I mean, you go over the street, you're going like this all the way along. Is that the same kind of a plan they're going to do in this new construction, or will have that settling take place again like this?
The intention would be to leave that existing line alone, any that aren't connected, any connections would be made. But we'd also be adding new blacktop and 12 inches of new aggregate. So, you know, that settling is probably largely done. It's not, it's never completely done, but we would make corrections to the sub-base and aggregate supporting that surface as well.
Okay.
Third street's the worst one.
It's really irritating. It really is.
It's got a lot of them, like, it's been done.
Yeah, it's...
Well, as an engineer, I don't like driving those streets.
No. No. It's tore my old Dodge apart practically. Has the decision been made to do the entire sewer project, or do you still have to televise to see if it's necessary, or what's the plan there?
What we've done in advance of proposing this, when the street was coming up for surface, we went through and televised the sanitary sewer and found it in good condition or in, did not need to be replaced. Some of them are proposed to be lined. I can't say if 14th Street was or not, but that doesn't involve any disturbance to the homeowners. Maybe for a day, they insert a liner, and then they robotically cut out for each service, so... It's a good question. I don't know if 14th was planned for that or not, but the ones...
So if it isn't done, I mean, there'll be less of an assessment, I would assume. I mean, you're basing your assessment on the full bore as far as sewer?
The sanitary sewer fund pays for the sanitary sewer. The homeowner is responsible for the service out to the main, but it generally wouldn't change your costs, so... But in 14th, we're not replacing the sewer.
So it's going to be less of a project than 12th was, for instance?
Yes.
On that one, then?
Yep.
Okay. What's, what do you figure then the cost per homeowner will be? Do you have any figures?
On 14th Street, the estimated cost was $51.61 per foot. The city has a cap of $52 per foot, so it won't be any more than that. So depending on your, your front footage and your lot, I think you said 632, I can give you that number after the meeting, too.
Okay. So the anticipated starting of the project and finishing of the project, or...
We haven't completed the plans, and we're moving through this process. We're anticipating an April bid date. This is largely a bituminous project. Those plants don't open until mid to late May. I would expect June, July, August timeframe for this, unless it gets delayed for some reason. But until we have the contracts out and bid and the contractor on board, we want to keep as big a window for them to complete their work as we can, but then limit them so that once they start, they have to finish, so that the disturbance to the homeowner is minimized.
How do you handle, one other question, how do you handle fire protection mid-block, for instance?
We do work with the fire department, and they know about all the streets that are under construction. And then we try to maintain access as best we can.
Yeah.
For all emergency services.
So it would probably be, I would guess, 350 bucks a year added to your tax bill?
Your lot should be a standard, it shouldn't be, it's a regular lot, isn't it, Tom?
Yeah.
So, well, if it was $5,000, it would add about 675. I think yours is less than that, but it would be 675 the first year. It slides down as the principal decreases, so it's not like a car loan. You pay interest based on the balance. The council in previous years, before 2012, had charged, or had set the interest rate at 7%. Last year, they lowered that to 3.5%, and it was based on the bonding rate. It hasn't been set for this year. I expect something, it'll be up to them, similar to last.
I think that answers my questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I live on, at 610 15th Street, and I would just ask the council to consider if there's possibility to postpone 15th Street. In my opinion, you know, I travel the street every day. I mean, it's, it's not in perfect shape by any means, but considering the amount of cost it would add just to my taxes alone per year, the amount I was figuring was probably at least over 3,000. And to me, I probably couldn't, just looking at, trying to pay that off, you know, right away when the assessment is due would be a little bit difficult, so I have to stretch it out. And my preference in this would not be to add more debt if I could help. I'm trying to work to pay that off right now, the most I can. Been doing that for the last couple of years, and I know each homeowner is specifically different with the situation they're facing. But just in short, my opinion would be is that the road is, yeah, not perfect, but it definitely seems to be at least holding up enough to be usable for a little while yet. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? See one, no one else looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
A motion by Raymond to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's, what is the council's wishes?
I guess I would have a question for Kyle, based on that request. That section of 15th Street, are you fairly familiar with that?
I guess my, I could echo the concerns he had, is it's not in perfect condition. You know, could it go another year or two? Yes. We are doing other streets in the area, and we do try to maintain a, you know, stay somewhat local with the streets that we do, so...
But it would require some, if nothing else, patching and repair work.
Right.
That we'd leave alone, we would have to do some work to it.
Yeah, and I don't know it well enough to, you know, say, well, we could, you know, seal, it's beyond seal coating, you know, we can't just do that, so...
Greg?
I'd just like to address Mr. Gleason, just to make sure everybody understands. These assessments are payable over 10 years. It's not a one, you don't have to pay the whole thing at one time.
Yes, I understand that, yep. If I could just say, too, I know a couple of years ago, they came in and added some storm brain connections for sump pumps, I believe, on the street, and the patch job on that was a little rough, to say the least. And there is some definite sagging from the utilities that has happened over time that is creating some bumps, but the patching of that storm sewer definitely added a little bit of, well, it added a few bumps to the road, to say nicely.
And it's probably why they're in there this now, to fix that, too.
Yes.
Now, that's why he was putting it on the list to get it done.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond?
I don't think there's a good time to do it ever, but I think if you continue two or three more years, the cost of parb could go up higher than what your interest payments would be, you know, 10% a year, the way asphalt's been going. I mean, it's not going to get any cheaper, and then the interest being lowered from seven to three, something really, I think is a good thing for everybody, you know, but it's, the trouble is, you look at the cost in two years or three years, it's not, never a good time to do it, but we're really trying to get caught up on a few streets. We probably lagged for quite a few years, too.
It was originally constructed in 1966, and it has been overlaid twice since then, so typically two overlays. 66, so 47 years. So it, it has reached its life as well, and then we have...
Haven't been done since I lived there. Been there 36.
Well, this is 15th Street.
Oh, no, I thought you was... Yeah, see, I'm not hearing you. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank, okay. Thank you.
So...
Okay. What is the council's wishes on this?
I would concur with Ray. I'll make a motion to approve citing that, you know, it may not be the best time for some homeowners, but there's always going to be, you know, a homeowner or two that's, it's not going to be the most opportune time to do that. But, you know, we are trying to get caught up on our street problems and then get ahead of the game a little bit, so I certainly understand the concern, but I'll make the motion.
Okay. That motion would include St. John's Church as a side corner lot?
Yes.
Reduction in theirs for that corner lot? Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Nate to approve with the condition for St. John's Church, and we have a second by Raymond.
The alley would be removed also.
And the alley would be removed, yes. That, that's what you've got for a recommendation here, is by crossing it out, so...
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved for that, with that reduction for the church. Okay, the next item is our financial report, and I'll do a quick recap. We've got $23,484 for Central Valley Co-op for Street Fuel, $38,028 for South Central Drug Investigation Unit for fourth quarter 2012, $60,277 for EDC Educational Services for our data storage device, $122,339 for Blue Cross Blue Shield for February Health Insurance premiums, $196,208 for other expenditures, for a total of $440,337. What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion, pay the bills.
A motion by Kevin to pay the bills, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda items, and we have license minutes, temporary liquor permits, et cetera, all grouped into one motion. And what is the council's wishes on this?
Approved.
We have a motion by Greg?
Second.
Second by Brent. I do have one comment, though. I, I got two...
I doubled up there, I've seen.
2.3 for different items, so... Do we need to correct that, or is that...
They're all the same items, it'll be fine. I mean, it's more of an item, they're numbered for the sake of convenience or identification, but...
They're identified properly.
Right.
Okay.
The documents will be approved.
We do have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items are approved. The next, we will move on to action items, Resolution Number 24-13, to set assessment rate for commercial industrial street reconstruction, and we'll go to Kyle.
At the last, I believe it was at the last meeting, we considered the residential street assessment rate and capped it at $52. There wasn't a rate established for commercial and industrial streets. I did check, I tried to check with a few other communities. I did get one response. The city of Red Wing does charge a small amount more than residential streets for commercial and industrial streets, but their commercial rate was actually less than our residential rate. So making the recommendation based on past practice to keep them the same, and it's your...
Thank you. So it would be set at $52 for commercial and industrial also?
And in the future, we'd be bringing these all as one resolution instead of multiple.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Greg?
Nate?
To approve, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second.
And by Brent, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, thank you. Number twenty-five dash thirteen, accept the feasibility report and set date for public hearing for school. And we'll move back to Kyle.
As you recall, we had closed School Street for some time last summer, shortly after I started. We located, my staff located a cavity under the street where the storm sewer had failed and the street was washed out. Since that time, we've evaluated the storm sewer, we've talked to Otona Public Utilities about the water main, and then we've also televised the sanitary sewer. We believe that even though the street itself doesn't, the surface doesn't warrant reconstruction, all of the underground utilities do. We have a safety concern associated with the storm sewer, and as we take that out, it's fifty-four inch storm sewer, we're going to be taking out a lot of the surface of the street. Now is the time to replace the other underground utilities. We looked at doing this piecemeal, and the cost was almost as high as doing the entire street, so we are not proposing any street assessments on this because it hasn't, it was last constructed in nineteen eighty-five, it hasn't reached its full service life. It is a state aid street, so we can use state aid funds, but we're, we're only recommending assessments for the sewer and water services, which we're estimating at about two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per home. Because of the age of this section of town, most, the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and the water main, the original water main, were installed in the eighteen nineties, we're expecting that we'll be doing all of those services as well. The estimated project cost is seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, and we're estimating thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars of assessments. And the street would be going back in the way it currently is, but.
Are you looking at curb replacement also?
Yes, so.
Because you've got a line that has to be moved.
Yeah, we've got, by the time we do the water, the sewer, and the storm, we looked at leaving just the curb, and then, but by the time we do all the services out, we'll be replacing a third of the curb anyway. At that point, we might as well just take it all out. Machined board curb is much cheaper, and it looks better in the end, so. They did estimate it both ways, we looked at the cost difference, and it was apparent to go this way, so, to replace all of it.
Thank you. Now, you've also looked beyond that, that part of the street? Do you think that we need to extend going further either direction?
We'll be looking into that further east of Cedar. The storm sewer going south on Cedar is smaller diameter. Unfortunately, we need larger storm sewer in this area, but we don't have any cover. This, there's only about six inches between the pavement and the top of the storm sewer, so there's, it just isn't physically possible to increase the size. And then going to the east, we are looking at that as well.
Okay, thank you. Raymond?
Kyle, last year when we had the trouble, what'd we temporary, what'd we do temporarily?
We took a section of pavement out and then built a, a temporary wall on that storm sewer, backfilled, and then put a temporary patch on.
So there was a collapse of the storm at that time, you know?
Yeah, there was quite a large cavity under the street. And we don't think, while I say it's a safety concern, there isn't a pressing need, but we expect further failure on that storm sewer.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Move we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve, resolution twenty-five thirteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz, any further discussion?
What do you anticipate working on that, starting that, is that different than waiting for a bituminous plant to open?
That, well, it's a concrete street, but-
Right.
Construction time, you know, if they got started in May, you know, we might want to delay it because it is used by a lot of school traffic till after, I think, school gets out around first week of June, till after that.
Okay. Raymond?
What do you plan on the public hearing, Kyle, for that?
So the neighborhood meeting would be held on March twelfth.
March twelfth.
And the improvement hearing, I believe, would be the following council meeting on the nineteenth.
So March twelfth, a neighborhood meeting?
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. And with that, we will move on to ordinances, three point five point one, first reading, proposed ordinance three thirteen to vacate portion of Fourth Street Northwest, and we'll go to Troy.
The proposed vacation is for the potential Viricon project. There are currently utilities located within Fourth Avenue, the city is in the process of drafting construction plans to relocate these utilities. The proposed vacation will not affect access directly to any of the industries in the area. They will all maintain access either onto Park Drive or Twenty-Fourth Avenue, both sides of the portion that's being vacated is owned and occupied by Viricon. There would be a cul-de-sac on the east end of Fourth Avenue where it terminates. The portion that's being vacated would be from Park Drive to the eastern end of the property owned by Pearson, and so there would be a cul-de-sac constructed at that eastern The applicant would be required to dedicate utility easements to accommodate the sewer main in Fourth Avenue, as well as the gas and electric lines that would be relocated around the north end of the lot, due to the street being located within two separate plats, the property would need to be platted. Due to the necessary timelines, the city and the county have agreed to let the applicant plat the property after construction has commenced. We did hold a public hearing at Planning Commission, and we had no objections. Staff would recommend the first reading of this vacation as recommended by Planning Commission with the following conditions. Public utility easement shall be dedicated for the sewer main constructed in the old Fourth Street right-of-way. The public utility easement shall be dedicated for water and electric lines that are proposed to be extended around the north end of the properties, and all properties involved in the vacation shall be replatted. This plat shall also include the utility easements referenced in the two other conditions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions from the council?
Move approval.
A motion by Nate to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz, any further discussion? This being an ordinance, require roll call?
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Spenby?
Aye.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dodson?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. This has been approved, and with that, from Viricon, good luck, and pardon?
Thank you very much.
First reading. And this is the first reading, so we'll have a second reading at our next meeting, and then it should be all set to go.
Just a question, when would you anticipate an announcement?
Hi, my name is Gary Johnson, I'm vice president and treasurer of Apogee. We, we should be making the decision in the very near future, and again, thank you for the actions that you've taken tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to public comment, and if anyone, anyone would like to speak on items not on the agenda, please come forward and sign in.
As long as I'm here, I did want to comment about the, the progress on the cable television service. I am not quite sure where we're at with it. I've made some contacts of my own with the competitors, but they seem to have not heard that we're open to ideas. They also can't proceed much without an example of the agreement we would want them to operate under, so is there an agreement ready yet?
I can see that probably not at this time, but Chris can evaluate.
Certainly less. As you know, we had talked about this, I think, a couple of meetings ago. We have prepared a report of findings after our public input period that kind of outlines some of the concerns that the city is going to be working on in this franchise negotiations. Our attorney, Bob Vos, has been in contact with Charter. We had an initial telephone conference, oh gosh, a couple of weeks ago, where we outlined some of the things that we were interested in, and the process now is that Charter will be sending an initial proposal to us, so we're kind of right in the middle of the negotiation process, so.
So what I'm hearing is that we're just negotiating with Charter, even though the hearings identified many things that would be solved by competition, but we aren't addressing the competition issue, we're spending our time negotiating with Charter.
As our franchise is up in September, it takes a certain amount of time to go through all the renegotiations. I have contacted both Jaguar Communications and Hickory Tech, thank you, and had a meeting with the Jaguar folks, oh gosh, what was it, probably around August, and had an initial meeting about, you know, hey, we're, we're in this process, we'd like to, you know, invite others, and they had expressed an interest in, you know, becoming part of looking at Oatana. Now Hickory Tech had indicated verbally, you know, I was just a phone contact, and they had indicated that they had just completed a large build-out in Faribault and was not interested at this time in expanding into Oatana. He said to me something to the effect, gee, we're about five years out from another initial, you know, big outlay of, of money for infrastructure, so I think our, our best bet is working with Jaguar Communications about coming into the city. Now, our current franchise is still in effect until September, so as such, I don't know, I, I'm sure they'd like to see what we'd work out with Charter first before they want to, you know, get into details with us. Our attorney is confident that we can change some of our favored nation status under our current agreement, and I'm not sure about the timing of that, if that needs to be complete first or before we enter into negotiations with Jaguar, so.
Thanks for the update. I really think you heard that the public wants competition, and I think what you just heard described is that we're not working on competition. I've talked to Jaguar, based on our last, their last discussion with us, they're moving into Medford, and they're not available to us. We really need the competition here. It's six months out before we could have it, and these companies, Time Warner, Comcast, they all cannot look at things if we don't have what we want for a franchise agreement. This isn't something you're going to go out and have a different deal with every company. So it sounds to me like Charter is writing the agreement, and we aren't going to have competition going forward, and I'm disappointed in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What does Mankato and Rochester have, Chris, what companies are they with?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mankato and Rochester, what are they with other companies, you know?
I believe-
Everly or anybody?
I know Hickory Tech is in Mankato along with maybe MediaCom or-
Just wondering, maybe we should make some more contacts, maybe.
I know Channel Five last night or two nights ago had an article on Comcast, and their costs have gone up considerably in the, in the areas that they serve in the metro area, and the whole report was frustrating. Basically, they're saying, there's nothing you can do but pay us more money, and I guess that's, that's where, listening to that, I really caution that we should consider as low a year contract as possible, five years or less, because I, for one, am not satisfied with, with what Charter has, has been doing the last, obviously the last year. It's, it's frustrating.
Thank you. Anyone else? That will go to the roundtable, and I'll start with Greg.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing. Dave?
It was a good evening for Ward Three.
Brent?
Nothing this evening.
Raymond?
Nothing.
Nate?
Nothing to add.
And with that, we'll go to Mr. Mayor, Tom.
I had the opportunity tonight to attend the Oatana High School Robotics Team.
Yes.
They've put together a robot, and they're packaging and sending it off to Duluth for competition, so I hope they do well in the competition. It's just another good sign for Oatana because they had mentors help develop that robot, they had fundraisers to be able to support that robot, and I hope they do well in the competition.
Thank you. Chris?
Nothing less.
I just, I just wanted to congratulate the mayor on his appointment from the League of Cities meeting. He is now going to be representing us in the larger-
National League of Cities.
National League of Cities, so I wanted to congratulate him on that.
Congratulations, Tom.
Taking that extra time to do that, you gotta, you gotta, somebody's gotta know you're available to do that.
And to, I'm going to answer one of your questions, Paul, is that we've listened to the people. We've been listening, and we continue to listen, in regard to Charter. We need to get a contract negotiated before anybody's going to come and listen. If we can't get that done, then they won't show up either. If we get it done, we get what we're asking for, what the people have been asking for, then we can go forward. But until then, they're not going to come and see us because they know they can't until the time is up, and that's September. So we will continue to work on that to get it done. So thank you for your concern, too. With that, shall I entertain a motion?
Move.
Motion to adjourn by Ray, second.
Second.
Second by Greg, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Need to adjourn.
You didn't-